So we pray, Heavenly Father, thank you for this day you've given us to conduct the city's business. We want to give thanks to the men and women that make us make sure our electricity, water, utilities are there when we need them. We often take those for granted and consider them luxuries and this past weekend, occasionally we get reminded as our city or neighboring communities lost that power and remind us how fragile the supply is. Heavenly Father, we want to please continue to guide us in making our community and the areas around us better every day. Help us in our acceptance of others and pursuit of harmony. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 4th, 2019, and the minutes of the closed meeting executive session held on June 4th, 2019 be approved as printed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have nothing under communications. Anyone in the audience care to make any comments on an agenda item? Please step forward. Seeing no one. Commissioner Hill.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt consent agenda consisting of items one through six. Item number one, adoption of resolution 1920-017 on second reading. Resolution accepting lowest responsible bidder for residential demolition contractor. Item number two, adoption of resolution number 1920018 on a second reading. Resolution approving a contribution of $12,000 for Unity Point Red, White &amp; Boom, July 4th fireworks. Item number three, adoption of resolution number 1920-020 on a second reading. Resolution approving Laserfish software licensing renewal for the city and with R&amp;D Computer Systems LLC in the amount of $12,814.75. Item number four, adoption of resolution 1920-015 on second reading. Resolution authoring the re-lining of the street department 2005 Vector Tank Wall by Bessler Weldick of East Peoria in the amount of $12,912. Item number five, adoption of resolution 1920016 on a second reading. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2011 sewer easement machine and the trailer from Co Equipment Inc. in the amount of $25,000. Item number six, adoption of resolution number 1920-019 on a second reading. Resolution authorizing and directing the payment of an invoice to Image Trend Inc. for the software licensing services for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 for running and administering many operational aspects of the fire department in the amount of $12,513.32. As listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote. Mr. Mayor, I move that all the items numbered one through six listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted. Items numbered one through six having been read once by their title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have about five items tonight. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that the claims as listed on schedule number three be allowed. Mr. Mayor, I move that the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to issue orders on the treasure for the various amounts totaling $964,307.91 and the schedule of bills be hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Abstain.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
I have four ayes and one abstain, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, and Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 4441 hereto attached an ordinance accepting bid for sale of city-owned surplus real estate located at 212 Division Street, having been read once by its title, having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus.
Any discussion?
On this item, as we stated at our last meeting, we listed this item and the next item for sale by bid, and I believe it was in the amount of $6,222.22, I believe. So it's getting rid of surplus material and we went through the bidding process.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 4442 hereto attached an ordinance accepting bid for sale of city-owned surplus real estate located at 212 Arnold Road, having been read once by its title, having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. This again, like the previous one, went out through the bidding. It's a very small parcel of land, and I believe the bid was in the amount of $150.
That's a big one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 44432 hereto attached an ordinance authorizing special use for the property located at 2707 North Main Street in the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, to allow massage establishment or to provide massage services on the property be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingus. This is a, this is for fitness, the fitness nutrition, fitness super nutrition out on Cat Trail, and again, they're existing fitness building, and they're going to offer, they're going to have a room where they offer professional massage services in their facility to their, to their customers. Is there anything missed there, Ty?
So this is the first case that we've had come through with our new massage ordinance, and it didn't fit one of the exceptions, but their staff didn't have any concerns about the proposal here. The zoning board did identify that there was some vegetation that had been cut down along the southern edge of the property. That, as I've seen it today, is getting cleaned up, and then also recommended some landscaping out in front of the building. They do talk about expanding at some point their parking area in front of the building as well, too, but that's to come in the future.
Any discussion by the council? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
One last one. It's a rather lengthy one, so we'll get right. The resolution accepting grant from Illinois Housing Development Authority for city's demolition program. Whereas the city council of the East Peoria, city of East Peoria, the city, a Illinois unit of local government, met on June 18th, 2019, adopted this resolution in accordance with the laws of the state of Illinois, and whereas the Illinois Housing Development Authority, the authority has issued to the city that certain conditional commitment letter, together with amendments hereto, the commitment pursuant to which the authority has agreed to issue a grant for the abandonment, abandoned residential property municipal relief program, the program to the city, in an amount not to exceed $55,000, the grant. And whereas the city will use the grant funds solely and exclusively for eligible activities in connection with the program and for no other purpose, and whereas the city council deems it to be the best interest of the city to accept the grant now and therefore be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, the city council of the city of East Peoria hereby authorizes the acceptance of the grant. Section two, the city is authorized to accept the commitment and enter into a program funding agreement for the program, the agreement, and with authority wherein the city agrees to perform program services in return for the grant. Section three, the city hereby accepts the grant, agrees to deliver and execute the commitment of the agreement, and at any and all other instruments, certifications, and agreements as may be necessary or desirable for the city to perform all of its obligations and duties under the program, including any amendments, other agreements, or supplements. Section four, the city director of planning and community development without the necessity of or requirement for the signature of another person is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute on behalf of the city the commitment, the agreement, and all other documents and instruments relating to the grant to be delivered to the authority in connection with the closing, closing of the grant, and takes such further action on behalf of the city as they deem necessary to effectuate the forthcoming resolutions. Section five, the city hereby ratifies, authorizes, confirms, and approves any prior action of the city taken in furtherance of the foregoing provisions of this resolution and any and all documents and instruments previously executed on behalf of the city in connection with the grant. Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution 1920-025 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. This grant was Tyler, Ty, I will turn over to Ty. The grant submitted on behalf from his department, again, as the resolution there read, is for $55,000 for the demolition work. Ty?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is, as you mentioned, it's to assist us in our demolition backlog. We have probably 18 to 20 properties that are somewhere in the process, and, you know, we were excited to receive this grant. This was the second time we had applied for it. We were able to work with our, with our friends from the Phoenix team who have worked with us in the Richland neighborhood and other challenged neighborhoods to help put the application together, because sometimes it's a little bit challenging to figure out what it is that they're looking for. They really helped us get through that process. I will mention that demolitions are really that of last resort, that that's not the first place we go, that we try to work very hard with the property owner to get them to restore compliance to their property. Sometimes there's opportunities for assistance. You know, I mentioned the team from Phoenix. Sometimes there's, there's funds through them or LISC or even veterans groups to help folks with rehabilitating their properties. Where those are appropriate, we try to get those involved, too. Once we've exhausted all the other opportunities, that's where we wind up with the demolition component, and we do work with the city attorney's office in getting through that process. So we're looking forward to this assisting. We're hopeful that we can demolish up to an additional five to six properties here in the coming year with these funds, in addition to our typical three to four every year. So we're hopeful that we can cut that backlog in half.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is that all you had, Commissioner?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Decker?
One item, Mayor. Resolution number 1920-023. Whereas the Honorable Mayor John P. Call has recommended reappointment of Stephen Freeze to serve on the East Peoria Housing Authority Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and whereas the Honorable Mayor John P. Call has recommended the appointment of Ryan Beck as one of the city of East Peoria's representative members on the East Light Theater Board, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city of East Peoria to confirm and approve such appointment and reappointment, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that the reappointment of Mayor John P. Call of Stephen Freeze to serve on the East Peoria Housing Authority Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and the re, and the appointment of Mayor John P. Call of Ryan Beck to serve as one of the city's members on the East Light Theater Board to be appointed until he is removed by the mayor, be hereby confirmed and approved, and that this resolution number 1920-023 be adopted as presented. Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number 1920-023 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Both of these people, obviously I know Ryan Beck well, I work with him. He's, I don't know if he's ever done theater, but he is a tremendous singer. I think this would fit him well. He's had an interest in this area. And Mr. Freeze, I was happy to see that as well. Mr. Freeze, I actually thought was leaving the area. It's nice to see that he's not. He was an employee, an employee at a bank in the area for many years. I went to school with his kids. He's just a great person, so I'm, I'm happy to see both of these appointments, Mayor.
Any other discussion? I personally appreciate everyone that's willing to serve. Appreciate both these gentlemen, and that's all I have to say. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Very good. Commissioner Sutherland.
I have one item. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria that resolution 1920-006 hereto attached a resolution accepting the low bid for the city sanitary sewer system update project be hereby approved, and that this resolution number 1920-660, having been read once by its title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Well, can I say a little bit about this?
Absolutely.
This project, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm sure somebody will correct me, has been started two administrations ago, and was kind of finalized right before we have taken office and were elected. This is a very large project, and it brings us up to some sort of semblance of a standard for the EPA, and we were going to lose a lot of our funding at the end of this month if we didn't act immediately. I still am not comfortable with knowing enough about this, and like I said the last time, I will learn. I will be there as much as I can to be a part of this project. It is a necessary evil. I've visited the sewer treatment plant, and it's, 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 it's like, parts of it are like out of a bad movie. It's in very, very bad shape, and something needs to be done. So I think that I would like to ask for everybody's approval on this.
Any other discussion?
Well, the, I think we all recognize the need for this project, but the one thing I'm going to say with committing 37 in this phase, the importance of, of having a, you know, a city vested person oversight with some project management experience, and I'm not sure the details again on this project, whether the, we've been shared with the detailed project plan or not, but, you know, I would like to encourage that we have regular status reports bi-weekly, and hopefully using some sort of statusing called, I just blanked out on, but the, a very objective statusing, earned value, earned value management. It's a very, very typical type of project management statusing, and it uses the amount of work completed against what's planned versus a very subjective statusing. So I'd like to encourage that with the amount of money that we're committing to this project on behalf of the city. Okay, Commissioner?
Mayor, I, obviously we started this a long time ago. I don't think anybody that's seen this sewer plant will disagree that it needs to be replaced and renovated. If we wouldn't have done something about it, the EPA would have come in and forced us, and I'm, I'm confident that would have cost quite a bit more money. We were moving forward, and a few weeks ago, a month ago or so, we decided to take a pause because there were a couple of concerns that came up, and I think that was the right thing to do, and I think the right thing to do is to move forward tonight for the reason that Mr. Sutherland stated. I do support the city protecting its interest, whatever we need to do, whether it's to look for a consultant to, who's able to keep close eye on, on the project for us. If our staff is able to do that, that's great as well, but I think it's in everybody's best interest that we make sure exactly what the city needs done is done the way it's supposed to be. So I support continuing to look at this as we move forward.
Very good.
I'm going to, I'm going to also support this. The one thing I'll echo a little bit of what Commissioner Sutherland and Commissioner Decker said, the timing of this, I don't think is ideal for those of us that are new on the city council. A lot of the planning and work went in in previous administrations, but I'm under the understanding, and Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're on a time crunch here. If we don't do this by June 30th, this project is going to go up and it's going to cost the city additional money. Is that correct?
Yep. Yes, that is correct. From what I've understand is if we don't proceed tonight, that our funding from the EPA will be withdrawn. We can reapply in January. Potential bypass funds might be available. If not, we might have to wait another complete season before we'd be able to proceed any, with ahead with any plans. So minimum six months, could be 18 months, before we'd have to completely start all over, rebid, and reapply and go through the whole procedure again. So you are correct.
And to me, that's, that's a very important thing to note. While the timing may not be perfect, some, things aren't always perfect, and I'm going to support it for that reason.
Yeah, in a perfect world, we were bid ready in October, and we were held up at the EPA level to getting us through that spot, which is kind of why it's ended up on your plates now. Had we got through the bidding process in October, we would have been accepting bids in December, looking at a, realistically, at a May to June start date. EPA held us up enough time that this is just kind of the way the timings worked out at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to speak to a couple of things, just with the IEPa loan, basically to finalize everything, they're waiting for the signature on the intent to award the contract. As we'll prove this tonight, I think you'll see all five of us support this. The IEPa loan is based off the state's fiscal year, which is July 1st through June 30th. Dennis referred to the bypass period. We were approved, the funding is in the bypass period, the last six months of the fiscal year. So should we opt not to move forward with this project, then we do get bumped, and then we have to basically reapply next January, and as everyone knows, the state recently, the legislators passed a capital bill that went to the governor, so as you can imagine, a year from now, things are going to probably be quite busy, and if we go out for bid a year from now, who knows where the costs will be or who might be available. But just to kind of give everyone some background, I felt it was important to come up for some air after the first reading, to allow everybody up here an opportunity to, to look at this project. There's no way everyone's going to understand all aspects of it, but I am confident, after discussing some things with Mr. Sheridan at Farnsworth, that we'll develop the best practices on behalf of the city to see this through from breaking ground to a completed project. And both with Farnsworth and Williams Brothers, I believe we will schedule probably bi-weekly, if not at the worst-case scenario, monthly meetings, but we will have a change order policy in place that all parties agree on, and I'm confident at the end of the day, we'll be glad we did it. So it's much needed, long overdue.
Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
That'll be it for me.
Very good. Commissioner Mingus?
Mr. Mayor, I have three items. Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1920-024 hereto attached, a resolution approving the purchase of replacement generator for Fire Station 4 from Altor for Power Systems in the amount of $24,994 be approved, and that this resolution number 1920-024 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Yes.
This is a backup generator for Station 4. It's my understanding, and Chief, I'll defer to you if I, if I leave something out, that we have two generators, one at Station 4, one at Station 3, that are in pretty bad shape, and the idea is to replace this one this fiscal year and next fiscal year, look at the one in Station 3.
Well said.
Thank you. And it powers, I mean, it is what it says, backup power for the station.
Correct. In the event of a power outage, it's going to take over and can, can operate the station.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. My second item, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1920-026 hereto attached, a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a replacement Esda tornado siren located at Illinois Central College from Reagan Communications in the amount of $38,165 be approved, and that this resolution number 1920-026 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
This is exactly as it says. It's a second tornado siren that we've purchased. We purchased one, I believe, a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago, and talked about how we had two more that ideally we will purchase, and this is the second one, and this one will be going at ICC.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mingus.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present, putting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
My final item, be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that a permit for the public exhibition of fireworks be held on July 4th, 2019, rain date July 5th, 2019, to Midwest Communications, Inc., Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated, in connection with the Fourth of July fireworks, Unity Point Health, Red, White &amp; Boom in East Peoria, Illinois. Be it further resolved, that the $30 license fee required by section 3-4-6 of the city code be hereby waived, and that this resolution number 1920-022 be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker?
This is pretty self-explanatory. This is the permit needed, annual permit for our portion of the Red, White &amp; Boom, which is our annual Fourth of July celebration.
Any further discussion?
This is, it's nice to always hear really great comments about the Fourth of July fireworks here on, on the riverfront for us. People really enjoy coming to East Peoria, it's a very safe environment, and I like that. I like being there and seeing the, the police presence there, walking around, talking to people, and that's good to see. Obviously, firing EMS is, is throughout the crowd as well. There is one concern, and it's a concern every year, and our police always do an excellent job, but it's going to get more difficult over the next couple of years, and that is traffic. I have been assured, and I've asked many times, every time I see an email about the project down the road, I ask about making sure that it is completed by Fourth of July, and I'm talking about the road project. Anybody who drives in East Peoria from Main Street to Spender Drive that encompasses the railroad tracks, like, right out in front of the police station, that section of road has needed replaced for quite some time. It's great that it's being done, it's a little bit nerve-wracking, though, for it to being started now. But they're confident, Dennis, chief, they're saying five days, and so hopefully by Friday, weather permitting, although it doesn't look very good tomorrow, that we'll have this done. They'll still give us, I think, a week and a half leeway. But that, we should have, we should be fine this year. Next year's going to be a bit of a challenge, though, with all the different road issues we have going on or planned. But I don't know if there's anything either of you two want to say about that, or I just thought I would mention that I believe those will be completed.
We have been in contact with IDOT. We actually were in contact with IDOT today. Sergeant McAlley had spoke with them. We're hoping that the project on Camp Street will actually be completed, at least to the point where we'll have two lanes of traffic be able to flow there. As for the ramp going on to 74, we've been, we've been told there's a good possibility that will be completed, but we can't guarantee it. So we're playing, we have two different plans. We have worst-case scenario where none of that is corrected, and then we have the plan where the ramp is open, and then also Camp Street's open. So we're kind of have both in play, but we're in contact with IDOT constantly, basically to find out where we're at with that status.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While present, putting eye, your honor.
Thank you. Is that all you had, sir?
That's all I have.
Very good. Any comments from the audience on a non-agenda item? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Seeing none. Comments from the council?
I have one item, Mayor. It's the executive session tonight. Mr. Mayor, I move that a closed meeting or session of the city council be held at the conclusion of the regular meeting to discuss the following matter or matters according to exceptions provided in the Open Meetings Act and specified as follows. Section 2C-1, the employment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for, of the public body, including herein testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Section 2C-2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While present, putting eye, your honor.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Mr. Mayor, I have just one comment to remind everybody. We're two weeks into the farmer's market, so the, last week there were more vendors, this Friday from four to seven. We'll be, what, week three, Ty? So...
Ty into looking forward to Friday Night Lights, to follow that. So, you know, maybe there's some, some good synergy there between the two events.
Yep. So that's all I have.
Mayor, can I jump on a soapbox before I move to adjourn?
Yeah, absolutely. You get opportunity to comment.
I guess I was just a little bit slow when you guys said commissioners, and I was going to hop in because I wanted to say that I went for a ride around with the street department. And I'm going to try to do that every month, a couple days out of the week, since I don't have a real job. And spend most of the day with these guys and see what they need and what they don't need. And one of the things that I saw, and I'm not asking people to go out there and break their necks or do something that they don't want to do, because the last thing I want to do is, I don't, I don't think Big Brother should be telling you guys what to do. I think they need to be out of my billfold, not in my bedroom. But as we were driving around, there are some simple things that people can do, and that is, the branches, because of all the rain, have been going out and going over the people's fences and outside their yards, and getting into the sidewalks and the streets. And I was watching a little kid have to jump a curb with a bicycle with training wheels on it because there was branches hanging out on the sidewalk from somebody's house. It'd be really nice for them to trim it up, and I'm not going to go knock on their door, though. And we were observing a lot of, because of the rain, and it's exacerbated the situation because people are putting their gutters and their sump pumps and not protecting their gullies. Because nearly everybody in East Peoria, you're either walking down a hill or walking up a hill when you leave your house. And anytime that you guys put grass and twigs and branches in your gully, and it's anywhere around where the water's going, and it causes a washout and erosion because there's no foliage, we've got thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, which we shouldn't have to be doing this, that we're going to have to. And in the same respect, I'm asking you not to discharge your sump pump into the sewer, the sanitary sewer, and put it outside. So if you don't have anywhere to put it, and it's causing problems outside, and you shouldn't put it in the sanitary sewer, because the amount of volume that goes in there, the amount of chemicals that they have to use that goes in our river, it's not only illegal, it's not environmentally sound. So I guess my, on my soapbox here, all I'm trying to say in that is, listen, if you see something clogged up, if you see something hanging over and it's on your property, trim it up, clean it up, as you can. This rain's really slowed everything down, but these guys are doing a really good job. They were up cleaning the gutters up, the street gutters up on Muller Road this weekend because of the flooding through a farm field, and filled everything up and was flooding across the road, and it was, you know, affecting people's homes. And the street department went in to save the day. I don't know who's responsible for the problem. I think we need to get to the bottom of it, but they're the ones protecting everybody up there. So kudos. I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Mingus?
Thank you. Just wanted to take a quick second to commend and recognize our fire department. I was fortunate enough, like Commissioner Sutherland, to spend some time with a few of our firefighters, I think it was about a week and a half ago. They invited me to cut up some cars, they were practicing how to get people out. And while we were there, we got a call for a motorcycle accident, and an individual was on a motorcycle going down Coal Street, hit a deer. And when we came up on the scene, he was in pretty bad shape, and I got to ride in the back of the ambulance to the hospital with him, and he was still in very bad shape. And I was thoroughly impressed with their professionalism, their promptness, the way they got, the way they worked on that individual, got him to the hospital, gave him the best care possible. And it made me recognize, remember, we have a lot of good services and a lot of good things that happen in East Peoria, and it's awesome to be able to recognize or be able to experience that firsthand. And it helps, at least from my perspective, and hopefully for the citizens, to see, we do pay taxes, and I know that's something that people oftentimes gripe about, but we get top-notch service from our people, just like Commissioner Sutherland's saying. So I wanted to recognize, or fire, I don't know what three paramedics from the back of that ambulance that day worked in, and I tried to find that out today, and I wasn't able to, but they did an awesome job, and I want to recognize them.
Perfect. Appreciate it. You know, it's exciting to see a council, honestly, and kudos to everyone sitting up here, all you guys are involved in your departments, and I know they're communicating across the board, which is huge, and it makes us all better for that, better as a community. Commissioner Sutherland, by the way, that farm field, the county was reached out to, that fell under the county, and the county basically said, do be in agriculture, they weren't going to do anything. So you're right, kudos to the city, and for Dennis, for your staff for stepping up and taking care of a problem that really didn't fall on the shoulders of the city, but it ended up there. So they did take care of that. Friday Night Lights was mentioned. Farmer's Market, four to seven, Friday Night Lights kicks off at seven. So for those of you that don't know what that is, it's a car show. It's kind of the Cars and Coffee, but done on a Friday night for those that can't do the Saturday, which Saturdays, I believe, are the first Saturday of each month. Thursday is the 25th Annual East Peoria Chamber of Commerce Golf Classic, over a hundred golfers. And I just wanted to mention that because it's full, registration's full, they fill it out every year. But for those that don't understand, that's a great networking for the community as a whole, both business, you name it. But to proceed, support the Terry Brewer Memorial Scholarship and the East Peoria Chamber of Commerce Business Scholarship. And that's, those two scholarships are awarded annually to the high school. So it's a great cause, it's a good time for those that participate. And as always, on their behalf, I just, I appreciate everyone. It's been very successful every year, and it's just a, it's a great thing. So kudos to them. And thank everyone.
Mayor, real quick on one, something to follow up on Commissioner Sutherland. Please remind all our citizens that it's against ordinance when they're cutting the grass to have their grass clippings go into the street. That's a hazard for motorcycles. It's really a dangerous situation. So we just want to remind our citizens, when they are cutting the grass, to make sure their clippings are staying out of the street, or if they are in the street, please make sure they are cleaning them, because it is a danger to motorists and more to the motorcycles who are out in the community. So if you see that, please let us know. We'll go up and we'll at least warn them or talk to the citizens before we take any action.